I'd like to call the owner of the regular city council meeting of Monday, July 12th for the roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Councilmembers Ratty?
Here.
Salerno?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Manager Carey?
Here.
City Attorney Harris?
Here.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation Rajan Zed, University Society of Hinduism. Welcome Rajan.
Om Bhur Bhuvahaswaha, Tat Savitur Vare Niyam, Bhargo Devasya Dhimahi, Diyo Yona Prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgama, Tamsoma Jyotika, Mritya or Mamrata Kamya. Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from darkness to light. Lead me from death to immortality. Nirdham Kurukarma, Tom Karma, Jaya Oh, Haya Karmana. Shri Raya Yatra Apichya Tena, Prasiddhi Eja, Jaya Karmana. Yek Nartha Karmana Oh, Niyatra, Lokoyama Karma Bandhana, Padarsham Karma Kauntia Mukta Sangha Samachara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to maintain your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Tasamada Saktam Karyam Karma Samachar. Asakto Haya Charan Karma, Paramapunauti Purusha, Karma Neva Hi, Samsidhi, Masitah, Jankadeya, Loka Sangraha Mevapi, Sampa Shankar Tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. Why devotion to selfless? One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Bhavatu Sahana Bhaktu Sahaviryan Karva Bahai, Tijasvi Nawadita Mastu, Ma Vidvisha Bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akuti Samna, Hardyaniva Samnam Asthugomano, Yathava Sushahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace unto all. Om.
Thank you Rajan, we appreciate that. And that's Universal Society of Hinduism, not University, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Salerno, would you lead us, please?
Please, Johnnie. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I have no speaker cards. Anyone under comments from the public like to speak now? Okay, moving on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Moved to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meetings of June 14th, 2010, and June 2028, 2010. Any additions or corrections? Mr. Schmidt?
Um, that was for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Salerno?
Moved to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 14th and June 28th, 2010. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, now it's announcement and presentations. We're going to take a brief recess and present to you folks, if you want to come outside with us to check the, check out the new Sparks special events shuttle buses. Mr. Smith, do you have anything you want to say?
Tracy?
Tracy?
Just real quickly, Tracy Dominguez, Recreation Superintendent. We have for you today the second bus, which was all city information on it. It's ready and it's been running already. For 4th of July, we ran the two buses in addition to two charter buses that the Nugget paid for. Our two buses kept track and we shuttled a total of 200 people from Shields or from Legends to the Nugget on the 4th of July. So, I'm guessing if that held true for those two, they had 800. Use the shuttle is my guess for 4th of July, which is good. Farmer's market's still pretty low, you know, I don't think we've gotten over 50. But, the word's getting out and we're getting a great response on the buses, so if you have any questions, I'd answer them.
Questions for Tracy? Mr. Schmidt?
What kind of responses are you getting from not only the riders but observers?
Um, nothing real specific, just how nice they look. They like them. They're different, they're new, you know, so I don't know how much they're noticing that they're not being specific. But, they are being noticed. They really are.
Yeah, I agree. And I would like, if we could, for the public, if Mr. Smith or you were able to give just a couple minute briefing of how you obtain these buses and the costs and stuff associated with them, so the citizens know exactly how little taxpayer monies we have going on here.
Love to. I was in an RTC meeting and the Vice Chairman of the RTC a year ago. And we were talking about buying some new buses for the RTC, eight articulated buses. That's a long bus with the rubber in the middle. And I said, "Well, what do you do with the old buses?" And they said, "Oh, we sell them." And I said, "Okay, who do you sell them to?" And he goes, "Usually Mexico buys them." And I said, "How much?" And they go, "Oh, a couple thousand, 2,000." I said, "2,000 for a bus?" I said, "You're not going to sell them to Mexico this year, you're going to give them to the city of Sparks." So, after, I think Stan got involved and you got involved and Public Works got involved, we took possession of two of the buses. Now, these buses, they may have some miles on them, but they've been maintained the whole time. They're in pretty good shape and we got them for special events. We got them for Parks and Rec, they can use them for shuttling people around. We can use them for about whatever we want to do. And I did learn that we had to put tires on the buses, which was part of the deal, because I didn't know they leased those tires. So, we bought, we owned the tires now, right?
We own the tires.
And then we've got the wraps on them. You know, they lease tires.
Yeah, they took them away. They gave us the buses, took the tires.
That's an education. Actually, they just, it was jacked up when they came out the next day, all tires were gone. So, um...
Look, you might have been in the neighborhood.
We've got two buses right now and if it works out, who knows, maybe we'll get some more down the road. But, I am, I'm excited to see them. Are they both out there?
No, just the one. I could only get one driver, I'm sorry.
Okay.
His driver availability's not real high.
I just think it's a boon for the city of Sparks where, and nobody else has them. And I think we should all go out and see what they look like and give us your comments when you're done.
Well, and also, and you might want to elaborate on this, Mr. Schmidt or Smith, the wraps did cost money, but it wasn't, it was through the Tourism and Marketing Committee that funded the cost of the wraps.
Right, the Tourism and Marketing Committee paid for one and the Legends paid for the other one.
Legends paid for the other one, correct.
And we were anticipating paying for both of them and try to sell advertising. So, basically, we sold one bus full of advertising already. So, I think you'll be impressed with them. I've seen pictures, but I haven't seen the bus.
It looks nice. Got to look at the back.
Look at the back.
Okay.
All right, let's reset for a few minutes. All right, let's call the meeting back to order. Consent items, anybody want to pull a consent item, 5-1 through 5-5? Mr. Carrigan?
Couldn't find the mic. Yeah, I'd like to pull 5-5.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
Moved to approve the consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.4.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve consent items 5-1 through 5-4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I made a mistake here. Okay, seeing none, please vote. Tried to tally before you voted.
How did I vote?
You did good. Passes unanimously. Mr. Carrigan, 5-5.
Thank you, Mayor. John, just come on down for a second. I just wanted to publicly thank John Martini for this. I don't know if a lot of you know, what happened is they, FEMA inadvertently left a bunch of homes in the Wingfields Pioneer and I think the Foothills in the floodplain when they redid a map. We got the call, I got the call from a gentleman out there and I think the first number we heard was what, John, 130? And now you found what, 190? Something like that?
Yeah, that's correct. We, last count out there, I'm showing 190 parcels of land. And as Councilman Carrigan said, it was, as I went through in the staff report, when they converted from paper maps to this very high accurate digital map system we have now, it's not that they did it on purpose. When you go from paper lines to digital lines, 2 millimeters puts a property in or out. And if you've seen my map in my office, it's all the border properties. 190, it includes Fire Station 5 and some of Golden Eagle Park, which actually was always in the floodplain. So, with this contract, we'll also work on the GARP area and get our properties out of the... And in my staff report, I said floodway. You can tell what I used to do all the time. These are floodplains, not floodways. So, we will clean, our intent is to clean the entire flow system from Golden Eagle Park all the way out to the Pioneer Ditch, the big ditch out there or North Truckee Trade, and get all these properties in one shot.
Okay, and also, that, kind of the effect, excuse me, the effect of this is that the people that ended up in the floodplain had to play, pay extra for insurance and that the thing that was really killing a lot of them, if they could even get insurance on their house, was they had to do the flood. So, anyway, I wanted to thank you for getting on it really quickly. I know it's 105,000 from the city's money and maybe down the road, we could ask our city attorney if there's a way we could get some money back from the federal government since they made the mistake and we're going to have to clean it up, but I don't know. So, something to do. But anyway, thank you again, John, and I'm sure the people out there, thank you. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 5-5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, John, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
6.1, Presentation and Possible Action from City Council on a Report from the 2010 Public Safety Tax Initiative Working Group. Mr. Asher, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council, City Staff Members. My name is Steve Asher, I'm the former chief of the city of Sparks in quite 29 years. Currently a citizen of the city of Sparks and I'm currently working on a 2010, or working with a 2010 Public Safety Tax Initiative Working Group. I just want to take a little bit of your time this morning or this afternoon to talk about the quarter cent sales tax that I'm going to ask you guys later to help us with. In 2006 general election, citizens of Sparks passed an advisory question in regards to increasing the sales tax rate by one quarter of a percent within Marshall County dedicated to public safety. Unfortunately, this advisory question failed countywide. In the late 2009, a working group was established to form and address whether or not the city of Sparks should place an advisory question on the 2010 general election ballot to increase the sales tax within the city of Sparks by one quarter of a percent dedicated to the Sparks Police Department.
I do now.
Want to turn it over?
Nope.
I know we don't want to do that.
Thank you very much. The working group retained the services of the Bowserman Group to assist us in the development of advisory question. With the assistance of the Sparks Police Protective Association, a question was formed and it was put out in a, to the registered voters and we conducted the survey. The majority showed that two-thirds of the registered voters polled would vote in favor the quarter cents per sales tax for the public safety. This working group is continually working to develop an advisory question in the overall sales tax. At this time, we're asking that the council support the measure by approving the resolution of the 2010 Public Safety Advisory Question and direct staff to place the advisory question of the, on the 2010 general election ballot, as well as prepare potential changes to the NRS in form of a bill draft request or BDR to be submitted to the state legislator. Some of the things that I had a chance and the opportunity to talk to the council about in the past is this, is that a lot of the information is between the years of 2000 and 2010, the population of Sparks grew from 66,000 to 91,000, which is approximately 37.4 increase. During that time, the police department went from 91 sworn to 108 sworn, which was an increase of 18.7. In 2000, the Sparks Police Department had an officer per thousand ratio of 1.37. Currently, with the 108 authorized sworn police officers, the ratio is to, is down to 1.18 officers per thousand. According to the Federal Bureau of Investigation, who does studies for the size of our city, they feel that the ratio for police officers to residents should be at 1.8 officers per thousand resident, per the thousand residents. This quarter cent sales taxes would raise approximately $3.6 million in revenue that would be dedicated to the Sparks Police Department in use for salaries of new officers to backfill and also continue to put the officers in the per capita range where they need to be. An emphasis has been placed on the increase of sworn personnel for public safety, for the safety of the officers and the citizens within our city. Tentatively, this increase would add to the sworn complement by 25 officers. And it also includes the necessary equipment that we had, would need to, or they would need to continue with these officers. What our group is currently asking the city council is this, we'd like you to approve the ballot question, giving the citizens of Sparks a chance to vote on whether they want to have the city pursue the quarter cents percent, or the quarter cents penny sales tax increase. And I thank you for your time.
Questions for Steve? No questions? Okay, looking for a motion?
The motion is dismissed.
Oh, just a...
Yeah, I think there's a discussion on 6.2.
Oh, we have a special media. Okay. Questions, Mr. Schmidt? No? Okay.
Oh, wait till 6.2.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steve, thanks, appreciate you taking up this battle. We appreciate it, we need to do this.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir. Okay, 6.2, Discussion and Possible Direction to the City Clerk to Place an Advisory Question on the 2010 general election ballot within the city of Sparks to Ask Voters to Advise the City Council on an Increase in Sales Tax of One Quarter Percent for Increasing the Number of Police Officers and Police Support Personnel. So, is there going to be any kind of presentation on this, or Sean, or are you just looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, the matter before you calls for the council to decide if you wish to move forward. And your action to move forward would be to authorize the city clerk to carry out all of the required steps. The matter would then be returned to you at a special meeting next Monday at 9:00 a.m. for your final direction on whether to place this on the ballot. But, we want to make sure we take your direction today to move forward and authorize the clerk to carry out all actions necessary to bring this to you for final action.
Okay, questions for Sean or for staff? Okay, now, does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
I just, one question, that, are we required as a city to do this? Or can a PAC put any question they want to on a ballot without a council approval?
There is a procedure in NRS for citizens to place an initiative or an advisory question. We are following the procedure whereby the council would, would as, under your powers as a subdivision of the state, be authorized to place an advisory question. So, this path was, was, was the one that came forward through the working group process as a way to confirm that the council desired the input of the public on this tax question. If you're implementing the form of this tax question as presented, it would require the city of Sparks or a legislature to follow on with change necessary in a BDR. It was therefore felt that it would be best as a city question.
Is that it?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just the way this, this sounds, you know, with the wording and everything on it, it makes it sound like that the PAC can't get formed unless the city council does the, this ballot question. It's always, or it's always my understanding that anybody, any group can go ahead and put a question on the ballot if they want to. It doesn't require the city council's approval for this to happen. But, what I understand, what we're doing is authorizing staff to support the group to do all the information on the ballot. Is that, is that what this is for?
No, sir. There is a, this is a specific process where the city would place its advisory question on the ballot. And at that point in time, the city staff is not in a position to there, at that point forward, provide any information other than the basic facts. A political action committee will be formed by members of the working group, who are headed up by various members of the community. And those papers would be filed, as I understand, from the committee, should this action proceed to the ballot, they would file and that would give them the right to campaign for this issue. But, it will at no time, in accordance with our charter, which is very strict, involve no use of city time. In an advocacy perspective, we will answer questions to the negative or to the positive. And it's very important that your city staff comply with the charter and would remain neutral, except for information answering. And a political action committee would be very valuable to the citizens on either side, either for or against, in actually getting them to understand this issue from a political
Mr. Salerno?
Yes. I realize the need for this. I think, I think we need to go forward with it. I would like to make it clear that if this was a decision that the city council had to make to just arbitrarily try to raise sales tax a quarter of percent, I wouldn't support that, even though I realize the need and the reason for this. But, I want to make it clear that we're not doing it. Where this is going to go, the vote to the people, so they're the ones that will make the final decision. And... decision, and obviously, if they don't want to cut loose with another quarter percent, then obviously it won't pass, but I just want to make it clear that the people realize that we're not pushing this on them in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
To answer Councilman Schmidt's question, the city has nothing to do with the creation of the PAC. The PAC is created individually or independently. Only, under NRS Chapter 293, only political subdivisions chartered to cities such as ourselves can put an advisory question onto the ballot asking voters, especially on issues of taxation. The city is prohibited by law from endorsing or otherwise supporting any type of legislation or any type of advisory question. The PAC, it's my understanding that the PAC is here today to ask the city to put this on, under the city's authority. The clerk will come to you later on, not necessarily with individuals representing a PAC, but with individuals from our community who will comprise the arguments committee, both for and against. So I think the law is very clear in its delineation between activities of the city, activities of a PAC, and then ultimately, the individual citizens within our committee that will be assigned to these arguments committee pursuant to the city council's approval.
I guess I missed the answer to the question. I'll make sure I got it right, that this has to go through the city council to put an advisory question on the ballot.
That's correct.
It has to go through...
Under Chapter 293, that is correct. Now, there is an initiative and a referendum process that groups can get on the ballot as well, but...
That's a signature process. You have to go out and collect a percentage of signatures and everything else. This is a way to put it on. Okay, all right. I understand now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith?
If there's more questions to take, I was just gonna make a motion.
We do have a question. Mr. Schmidt, are you done?
I'm done, yes.
Okay, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Phil on, as far as this is asking the public if they want to do that. That's why I really don't like to recommend a motion, so whoever makes the motion really has to look at that, because there's two things I don't like about this motion. One, it says, you know, "I move to request the city clerk prepare and complete all supporting action for the placement of an advisory question on November general ballot, seeking a quarter cent increase." That sounds like we're the ones asking for it, so whoever makes the motion, I'd really appreciate it if you put down they're asking the public if they would like to increase sales tax by a quarter cent, and I think you have to be careful with, for public safety needs, because isn't this just for the police department?
Yep.
Then we better say this for the police department.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
I have no comment.
Okay, Mr. Salerno?
And I just wanted to clarify that, believe it or not, even though this just showed up on our agenda today, I've already had phone calls about us raising the quarter percent sales tax right off the bat, and I've told them that we were not doing that, and so that's the reason I made that comment. Thanks.
Mr. Smith?
Always a wrench. Okay, let me try to, let me try to make this motion. "I move to request the city clerk prepare and complete all supporting actions for the placement of an advisory question on November general election ballot, asking the citizens to approve a quarter percent increase in the sales and use tax for the Sparks Police Department."
Do we have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to put this to the city clerk for further approval by the city council, for the citizens to advise us whether they would like a quarter cent sales tax increase. Does everyone understand the motion? Okay. Seeing no further questions, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay. Thanks, Steve. 6.3, Discussion and Possible Action on Whether the City of Sparks Should Be Included on a Proposed Washoe County Ballot Question. Should the local governments of Reno and Washoe County pursue a consolidation of the governments if it can be shown to save money and/or improve service? Questions first, Ms. Ratty?
I'm sorry, I'm going back to the other item. I didn't quite get your attention. So the approval of the pro and con committees, that happens at the July nineteenth meeting?
No.
Did I miss it? Sorry. I was looking.
Mr. Carrigan, did you want to speak now or forever hold your...
No, I'll listen to what Steve has to say, and then I'll have a comment.
All right.
I'll have a comment on this.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm not sure I like that, but we'll go forward. Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record, what you have in front of you is the chance for this elected body to have a discussion on items that will be on the City of Reno and Washoe County agenda later this week. Washoe County tomorrow, City of Reno on Wednesday. This came up from a prior discussion about having an advisory question on the Washoe County ballot that, per the discussion, ended up including Sparks, and the question is inside the title. This is a similar question to what's been asked in public survey by the county of its constituency in the past, and the question before you, this gives you a chance to discuss, A, kind of what you as the City of Sparks would like to do, and what voice you would like to be heard in those other two meetings. So really, my job is to introduce and let you discuss amongst yourselves in open public forum, and then we'll work with whatever you come up with.
Questions? Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the comments I had, this question, okay, even if, you know, I don't know where we're gonna go with this, but even if we went with this question, I think this question is ludicrous, because who's gonna vote no on this? Because all it's saying is, should the local governments in Reno and Washoe County pursue, you know, it doesn't mean they're gonna do it, consolidation if it saves money. Well, who's gonna say no? Oh, I don't want to save money, so I'm gonna vote no. So if we do get in on this, if we decide we would like to put, you know, Sparks in it, I think we better talk to Washoe County and Reno about having the questions a little bit more defined, because I think this is not, you know, this is almost to me like saying, let's vote to see, do you want the sun to come up tomorrow? You know, maybe somebody suicidal would say no, but everybody else would generally say yes. So that's a problem I have here. The other thing that we've said, and we've said it many times, because the public, we've had surveys for the last, what, seven years, I think? Has it been seven?
At least, yeah.
At least seven years. I think the number this year was the lowest we've seen. Sixty-seven percent said no, so that was, so the thirty-three percent was kind of the lowest we've ever seen. But my question also is, if we don't want to put Sparks in here, and let me ask this question, aren't we still part of the county? And is this gonna affect us as a citizen of Sparks if Washoe County and Reno consolidate? How is that gonna affect us as the citizens here? So in other words, somebody's gonna say, well, you know, Carrigan wants his cake and eat it too. I don't want to put it on there that, you know, maybe I don't want to put it on there that we consolidate governments, but I think I have a right, because I think that I pay more taxes to Washoe County than any other entity, maybe the school district, I may be wrong there, but, and I think I should be allowed to vote, even though we don't have Sparks on there. So that's something for all of us to think about.
I can answer part of the question for you.
Well, that wasn't really a question. I guess it was just kind of a speech.
This, to your first part about the question in its current format, this is pretty much, with, you know, the exception of the names, consolidation, local government consolidation, this question and the way it's phrased is very similar to, if not exactly the same, as what's been in the citizen survey that the counties conducted that's statistically accurate, as is ours. Your body has questioned the question in the past from the standpoint that the counties only received in the mid-seventies or less as a yes to this question, when intuitively you bring up a point that says, shouldn't this be almost a no-brainer yes? So there has been a question about, you know, the actual question itself in the past. It's been asked numerous times in similar format, and so while you would think it should pass with a very high percentage, it hasn't, and I don't know how to address that to you, but you as a body have voiced concern on that in the past. Beyond that, I'm not sure that I have any other opinion.
Yeah, and to continue that, I understand that. The one thing that I've had people call me about is, as long as it saves money and we get better service, they're willing to consolidate or look at it, but the one thing they've told me they don't want to, and that's the government and police and fire. Everything else is on the table. If you take a look later on on our report to the legislature, you can see there's like two pages or three pages of stuff that we do, and I bet you that people don't know half of it, that we do have consolidated services. So I guess it's up to us today to decide. I haven't had a call on anybody telling me they want to see it on the ballot, but then again, I don't know how I feel about everybody getting to vote whether Reno and Washoe County want to be a super government when I'm a Washoe County resident, because once again, this is a thing I've been arguing about since I've been on almost every regional board, and that is, who's the county represent? All of us or just the unincorporated? And it sounds like in this question, it's just the unincorporated. So that's the problem I have.
Mr. Smith?
I would agree with Mr. Carrigan, and the motion, the recommended motion is to oppose being included in this ballot question, which I agree with, and Mike said it just a second ago, the citizens continually tell us that they do not want a consolidated government, fire, or police, and until that changes, that's my position, that we do not consolidate. Now, and we talked about shared services, and shared services work. We're doing it all over the board. There's pages of it, but they have to show that it saves money. They haven't showed that at all. They're doing consolidation for consolidation's sake. That's it. So I will, I will support the motion if it goes down to oppose it.
Ms. Ratty?
I perhaps have a slightly different take on it. I will not say that there was an outpouring of support, but I did get one email and one phone call asking for Sparks to be included. Clarifying, I mean, obviously, if we're in the county, we're gonna get to vote on it, but they were looking for Sparks to be included in the question. Would you support having one consolidated government for all of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County? I think we have something to win here, which is, you know, this conversation has been going on and on and on, longer, and probably will be continuing to go on, but if the public comes out, and we can, we can look at what the citizens of Sparks say versus what the citizens of Reno and Washoe County say in the results, and Sparks strongly says no with a vote of the people, and I know our survey is statistically accurate, but it is six hundred folks that we ask as opposed to the entire voter base, I think that, you know, the possibility of reaffirming our position with the support of a broader base of the populace isn't necessarily a bad thing. So I would be comfortable, because I'm, because I hear it over and over again as well. People who talk to me do not want to give up the Sparks form of government if they live in Sparks. So I'm comfortable having it on the ballot and would support that motion, but I know there's some trepidation, and we have a different recommendation from staff, so I'm looking to hear some other opinions.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Ms. Ratty, that I think the voters, we should give them the opportunity. I have a problem with the question, because I think that the question itself can be misconstrued, and, you know, just be careful for what you ask for, you just might get it, and this is one that could go in many different directions depending upon how you read the question, and I really think that there has to be discussion with Washoe County and Reno about putting a very definitive question on the ballot, and I want to have an opportunity to go ahead and say yes or no to this, but I don't think a misleading question is in the best interest of anybody in this community.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Sure, go ahead.
In the discussion at the joint meeting earlier today, Reno did invite Washoe County elected officials to participate in the discussion on the question on Wednesday. I would assume that since it's an open public meeting, that it would be appropriate for members of this body, either however you wanted to deal with it, however you directed yourselves to participate in the discussion as well, if the council was so inclined.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
You know, and I would agree that going to the public is not a bad thing, it's a good thing. Let them decide. The only problem I have with this is that Sparks citizens would not be deciding their own fate. The county would be deciding what we do, so I'm against that.
Mr. Salerno?
Yeah, and my take on it is, is that I think what really throws it out of whack here is that they're trying to seek to consolidate the governments, and we've made it clear for years that we do not want to consolidate. Now, that doesn't mean we don't want to share services, so I think the right thing to do is to oppose this particular ballot question. I mean, that's the will of the people of the City of Sparks, and we've made it clear many times, and they know our feelings, so I just think the wording is bad on this.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, and to go along with what Julia said, I have no problem putting this in front of the voters of Sparks at all, as long as we have a good question. That's why I brought it up. I mean, if somebody's gonna make a motion, and this is the only choice we have, then I'm gonna say no, because it, you know, it's not a good question, because, you know, here's the thing, why would somebody in Sparks say no? If somebody said, oh, yeah, okay, it's gonna save money, and, but, so I just don't like the question, and so I think we can come up with a better question. But once again, whether we're in or out, I still think we should, I think it, can somebody tell me it's not gonna affect us when Reno and Washoe County combine? Let's just say, they say yes, and they decide to combine governments in Reno and Washoe County, does somebody here not think that's gonna affect us in Sparks?
So is the language cast in stone, Steve, here?
Mr. Mayor, Steve, again...
And there's no, there's no real time to change this, is there?
As of 2:30, the question that's in front of you is what's on the staff report for the Wednesday meeting with the commission. The only difference is, the person that I spoke to wasn't sure whether they had added the word, should the separate local governments, versus this question reads, should the local governments. This was the published question, and it's my understanding, it was the understanding of the person who's responsible for the agenda item, that this is the question that's gonna start the discussion on Wednesday. Reno will, I mean, at Washoe County tomorrow, excuse me, and then Reno will continue the discussion on Wednesday at their council. So the elected officials and whoever participates can change the question significantly, or it could come out just the way it is, but this is what's on the...
So, let me ask a question. Can we postpone this until the nineteenth? So we find out exactly what the question is or how it's gonna read on the ballot? Do we have, do we have that kind of time? I mean, I don't mind one way or the other, as long as we know what the language is. We're going into this and say, put this on the ballot the way the language is now, then we have no other choice but to do it even though we don't like it.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Driscoll, again, for the record, as I understand the process, five o'clock, Monday the nineteenth, is the deadline for submitting these types of questions. So the county will be required to have the question in its final format to the county registrar by five o'clock on Monday the nineteenth. So how you, how you deal with that between now and then is the pleasure of the council.
The way it's worded here, I wouldn't be in favor of it, but we don't know how it's gonna come out down the road, so. Ms. Ratty?
So I guess if I understand the process, what's really going to determine it is the county commission meeting to put, Tuesday, to put the question on the ballot. So I guess my question is, do we have a question that we would support? Because our opportunity to affect this process is really to give them input to the county commission, and we can say, I think we can say pretty much whatever we want, right? That's what we're elected to do. So we could say, we don't support the question as written, but we would support a question that reads like this?
This would be time and place for you to have that discussion?
This would be the time to do that. So does anybody have a suggestion of a question that we would support, that people feel is not as legal?
You know, I don't know if we can or not. That's not necessarily agendaized.
We're, the agenda item is to only oppose?
No, that's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation, but what's the agenda item? Taking action on whether or not to...
Well, the agenda item is not a, the development of the proposed question to present to Washoe County concerning the consolidation of governmental services within Washoe County. But do what you want. I'm just here to advise.
Okay, let's do this. I have the city manager wants to speak, and then we have a public comment that we need to listen to, so go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. A couple of points I wanted to raise is that the question that is posed to you came from the county commissioners as to whether Sparks wanted to be included within the language of this question, and I think that in an analysis of this single question and applying that to a very complex problem, therein lies the problem. We have had a shared services team working diligently on this effort, and this question... We have had a shared services team working diligently on this effort, and this question has not been vetted against the complex problem that exists. And I think it's probably really worthy of the government of Sparks, that we not participate in something which really does lack fundamental foundation. The question of representation is equally important in local government to the question of what does it cost to provide service? And that is not answered in this question. It uses a simple term of, shall these three be consolidated? Doesn't say how, doesn't say what they'll do, just says, will they be consolidated? The fundamental problem you also have is, once this question is on the ballot, your role becomes one of advocacy from a perspective of answering only questions. And has this been vetted by a business community or by the public to have them understand this complex problem, so that proper questions can be phrased? And then cost has always been a very dangerous slope from which to look at consolidation, because at what point in time? And what are the inputs to that cost? The city of Reno, for example, has far different labor agreements than the city of Sparks, and those agreements would be melded how to achieve this cost perspective? Is it measured at the point of consolidation, or through the life of consolidation, or what is the basis of cost? Mr. Schmidt raised this question of cost months ago in his efforts on shared services to pose that very question, because we are not speaking the same language. It sounds good to a voter to say "cost," but "cost for what"? We could continue to cut the Sparks Police Department to any point at your discretion, but it would not provide service. And I think that's why your resolution, which you adopted as a body unanimously, confirms that we want to take an intellectual and thoughtful process to consolidation. And this question, I fear, will lead to a very poor choice by our voters and should be avoided.
Okay, let's, excuse me, we have one public comment that we need to, that we'd like to get through, so. Mr. Drake, Darryl Drake, you have three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and is this on?
Yes, it's on.
And members of Sparks City Council. My name is Darryl Drake. I am a resident of the city of Reno, and I'm here to speak to you today as a Washoe County taxpayer, and I'd like to put this in a little bit of a different perspective. I've been in business for over 20 years and in the trucking meadows here, and I've observed local governments and financing of local governments. I've been involved with a number of community civic groups who have looked at issues related to local government funding, like the fiscal equity discussions have been held for probably the last 15 years. I've also been a strong proponent of examining our tax structure from a statewide perspective, because I believe the methods by which we tax our citizens and our non-citizens and then allocate those taxes to local governments are, they're a little bit out of balance. They need to, there need to be some changes. I've also seen the, and been a strong proponent of the Sage Commission, which studied the state executive branch to make government work more efficiently. And clearly, the economic crisis that we are all faced with now have caused all of our governments, governmental entities, from school districts all the way up to state government, to look at efficient ways of using our tax dollars. The issue, the agenda item that you just had to consider a ballot issue for a quarter of a percent sales tax increase, I think is one that we've all struggled with, and the results of the last election, the ballot issue regarding that quarter percent was one that showed, when you looked precinct by precinct, the importance to the residents of the city of Sparks for their public safety. To sum it all up, and I suppose my concern, I recognize the concerns that Councilman Carrigan and Councilwoman Ratty have expressed, and I believe that it would be important for the citizens of all of Washoe County to be able to weigh in on this, however the ballot question is worded, because I do understand that the county commission will be at liberty to revise the wording that you have before you today at their meeting tomorrow, to either include the residents of, the voters of Sparks to vote on this issue, and perhaps to include the city of Sparks as a consideration in this question for consolidation of governments. If we don't look at any possibilities to make government more efficient in these economic times, I think local government officials will be remiss in their responsibility to their citizens. Thank you very much.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's, there's a misconception out there that Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County are not doing anything to save the taxpayers' money. And I believe the last report we had, where we outlined the number of things in each of the different departments, they were one-lined items, and it filled eight pages of stuff we're doing to, and I might be wrong on the number of pages, but it was, I think it was 100 and some items that we were doing. Look at the police department, we had the Consolidated Bomb Squad, we have the drug enforcement. Of course, I think that's fell apart in the last, last couple of months, but there's a lot of things we're doing to go ahead and consolidate services and reduce costs, and I think that that's unfair to say that we're not doing those. We've been working on this issue for six to seven years now. We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in studies on out there that people have done on parks and wrecks and road department, and none of them have come back with great savings by consolidation. It's not something that just started yesterday. It's been happening for a long time. There's a lot of documentation. I've sat on the Shared Services Committee for, I believe we're almost approaching two years now, Mayor, in 18 months, just to get the groundwork laid for three different departments to try to consolidate. It's a complete nightmare. It cannot get one group to agree with the other two on anything. I mean, it took close to six months just to prove the RFP to study the issue that it was, that was that bad. And I think that we're kidding ourselves to think that this is going to be a process which tons of money are going to be saved, and the citizens are going to get better service on out of it. It's just not there. No matter how hard you try to drive a square peg in a round hole, it's just not going to go. My issue comes down to, and, you know, we did the public safety thing, and it was brought on up there. You know, if we go back to the Public Safety Initiative in 2008, the cities of Reno and the cities of Sparks passed that initiative. We would not be sitting here today if we had the autonomy of the city of Sparks to do what we're doing, because the county residents said, no, we could not improve service to the city of Sparks residents. Now, let's take the flip side of that, and let's say the 91,000 residents in November said, no, we do not want to consolidate with Reno and Washoe County, and Reno and Washoe County said yes. Do we get the option of balloting out of all that? And I would say the president says, no. The citizens of Sparks request would not be honored. There is a very clear example of how the citizens could vote for it in our community and be overridden by two other communities, and I don't think that's fair. And I think we get back to the question, has to be one that clearly outlines the issues that are involved, and the citizens of Sparks are, depending upon how they vote, their vote counts.
Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. This was to Mr. Drake. You know, you bring up a good point, except for one thing. If you really wanted to be efficient, then you'd do away with Reno and Sparks as two cities, and you combine them as one, and you do away with Washoe County, and you say, okay, now we're one entity. Because if you thought about it, you could do that with North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, Henderson, Boulder City, everything that's down there, instead of having five different cities, you roll them all into one. Okay, that'll take care of everything. So the one thing you have to look at is, is that what you really want to do? Do you want to, in essence, do away with two charter cities and make it one? Because that, I think, is, if you really wanted to, you know, consolidate, that would be the way to do it, is just do away with everything and make it one big city. I think they did that in Jacksonville, Florida, and I think Oklahoma did it, Oklahoma City, and a couple of other places I can remember. But they found out that wasn't any better either. So you have to be real careful with what you, what you ask for.
Ms. Ratty?
Just two quick clarifications. One, that, I just want to be clear that I'm not, because there've been lots of arguments against consolidation, and I'm not advocating for consolidation, I'm advocating for asking the citizens what they think about consolidation, and that, secondly, it's an advisory question. So even if Reno and Washoe County came out in 100% support, and we came out in 100% negative, we still hold the keys to our own destiny here. So I, you know, yes, people are going to spin that, they're going to do whatever they're going to do with it, but we have the ability to say, look, 80% or however many people in the city of Sparks said no, and that's, that's who we take our marching orders from. So I'm not, because it's an advisory question with no teeth, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not afraid of asking people what they think.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I was just following up with Mr. Carrigan with a question. You know, there's a real easy way to do this process. It doesn't take a whole lot of money, doesn't take a whole lot of time, it takes, it can be done. All we need to do is decide to uncharter the city of Reno and the city of Sparks, take it to legislation, a 51% majority vote of the legislation, and it's done. And it saves the taxpayers a whole heck of a lot of money right off the bat. I proposed that to an official with Washoe County and Reno about six weeks ago in a meeting after the shared services, that if you really want to do this, just decharter the city of Reno, and you know what I was told? Then they lose the revenue for it. How are they going to survive without more revenue? It all came down to dollars. They wanted to have the best of both worlds, be able to collect all the taxes that they can, and then be able to do what they want to with the government on it. You need to, you need to be honest with the people. Either consolidate to save them money, or you consolidate for the power base.
Okay, for me, it's a matter of how the question is worded here. If we decide to go ahead and be on the ballot, we don't know what the question's going to be. And I don't know that we have a chance to make a change if we don't like what's on that question. I mean, if we approve this today, then we go to the county, they change the question, then we have no out. So I'm not in favor of doing this. Okay, questions, more questions of staff, motion? Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm going to follow the recommended motion from staff, and it's moved to oppose the inclusion of the city of Sparks on November 2010 general election advisory question that seeks to consolidate the governments in Washoe County.
Mr. Salerno? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Salerno to opt out of being on the ballot. Questions? Mr. Carrigan?
I just wanted to ask the two motion makers, can we add in there that it's because of the way the question is written? Would that be okay with you guys, if we did that? Because I, that's kind of the problem I have with it.
You know, my feeling is that if we wanted to do that, we'd have a separate question in Sparks, not a Washoe County question, because that's a slippery slope, you know. And I disagree with Councilman Ratty that if it fails or if it passes, that we can get out. I don't, I just don't believe that. I think they're going to do whatever they want to do. So I'm not going to change my motion. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, everyone understand the motion. Okay, seeing no further questions, please vote. Okay, it passes four to one. Ms. Ratty says no. Okay. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. 6.4, Discussion and Possible Approval of Resolution 3183 Supporting a Washoe County Advisory Ballot Question Regarding the Authority of the State Legislature to Take Certain Actions That Impact Local Governments Without the Consent of Affected Local Government Bodies. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Mayor and council, the item before you is a supporting resolution for a ballot question that's been approved by Washoe County in conjunction with a ballot question initiative that's been started by the Nevada Association of Counties. This is meant to put before the voters any time the state were to try to take funds from a local government's monies. And so NACO is working with the 17 counties. Washoe County and Carson City, Carson County have already approved the question as is presented in the staff report, and as counties are approving, they're asking their cities, both incorporated and chartered, to support with the resolutions that you've received a copy of. And so this is time and place for you to discuss whether or not you're interested in supporting the question that's already been approved by Washoe County.
Questions for Steve? Mr. Salerno?
You know, one of the things that's interesting in here, the key words that I picked out was these unfunded mandates. Over the years that I've been on the city council, this is one of the issues that has really hurt the city of Sparks in various ways, was these unfunded mandates that are passed down, and then all of a sudden, we have to figure out how to come up with the revenue to support those mandates. So I'm going to support this resolution. I think it's worded very well, and I think this needs to be addressed in this upcoming legislature.
Mr. Carrigan?
You know, I guess I'm nitpicky today, but, you know, these guys writing these questions are killing me. When you, when you talk about, shall the consent of the governing body of the local government, does that mean the local governments with an S? Or what is "the local government"? Does that mean the county? Once again, I have a hard time with this, because to me, I think it should be plural, shouldn't it? Meaning all local governments.
Mr. Carrigan, Steve Driscoll, for the record, the, the word "the local government" as it pertains to the question is singular from the standpoint that you saw in the special session, that there were extractions from individual counties individually with different percentages, and that it was also a school district that was specifically dealt with with totally separate piece of legislation, and they were the only one there. So while it talks about "the local government," it's intended to go down to the lowest, the level that's being extracted from, if you will. So if it happens to be the county which affects the county and all of its subsets, it would still be typically the county that's having the extraction taken from them particularly, or it may come down to you as the city, or a school district, or a GID. And so that's, that was why that language was put in, to my understanding.
Okay. Grammatically, I think it's incorrect, you know. To me, it was, I think it would, if you're talking about 17 different counties, and I don't know how many cities and how many schools, you know, 17 different school districts, you should say the local government. I'm sure that they vetted it through their attorney, did they?
That would be my understanding of NACO's work to this point.
Questions, more questions? Okay, no questions, looking for a motion. Mr. Salerno?
Yes, I made the motion that we approve Resolution Number 3183.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve Resolution 3183. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Are you still on?
If it's the pleasure of the council.
Okay, 6.5, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on a Draft Assembly Bill 494 Report to the Nevada Legislative Council Bureau. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. As you're aware, we've had numerous conversations that in the 2009 legislative session, Assembly Bill 494 was passed that requires the local government entities within Clark County and Washoe County, particularly the cities, to answer six questions that are in the bill, and to provide the answers to those questions in the form of a report. and to provide the answers to those questions in the form of a report issued to the Legislative Council Bureau of the later, legislature no later than September first of two thousand and ten in preparation for the two thousand and eleven session. You had instructed staff to prepare the report, and so what you have in front of you is a report that takes a previous white paper that was written on your behalf with your approval and distributed, and then answers other questions that may or may not have been answered in that original white paper. Um, you have access to what is a five hundred and thirty-eight page report that really, the first forty-four, um, pages of the report are the report itself. The remaining four hundred and ninety-plus pages are background information, various studies or, um, pieces of documentation that discuss what has been done or is in the process of being done currently on the topic of consolidation or restructuring. I think it's important, um, and what my attempt here is, we have until September first to have a final report. This is intended to be a draft and is labeled as such for you as the elected officials and for your staff to go through the various comments that are here and to make sure that they are, in fact, um, accurate and that they do apply. Really, the main part of this is, we do talk about, and it's been brought up before, when we get into, uh, page three, the first question, this is a list of everything that's being done in Washoe County currently, to the best of our knowledge, at a, um, operational level or above. There's, there are some intricate things in behind the scenes that are not on this list, but these are the things we're currently doing that were accomplished for a couple of reasons. One, that from a governance standpoint, it made sense to be the best operational efficiency as they could. Two, it saved money. Or, three, it provided a higher level of service. And the reason I say it that way is if the council remembers when they approved the animal control consolidation, that was not to save money. That was to maximize the use of pennies of sales, or pennies of property tax, utilizing the county's assessment level to create significantly more money to provide the service that we've been trying to provide as three individual agencies. So consolidation in that case, where, I think we run into confusion, most times consolidation, as it's done by the legislature and typically in conversation with the public, is consolidation is assumed to automatically save large amounts of money. This list does not back that up. What it does do is this list shows the things that we've agreed to as elected bodies through various elected boards to do the things that make sense to provide the best possible services for the revenue sources that we have. If we go, if we move on to page eight, which is answering question three, staff attempted to do a matrix that showed the departments and major operational functions of the city as the city is currently organized, and went through and answered the question about consolidation. A couple of things are consistent as a theme through here. In several areas, the Sparks Charter mandates that this service be done by the city. So as long as the Charter is in its current form, we are obligated by the Charter to perform that service on behalf of the citizens of the city of Sparks. The second recurring theme that you'll see through this matrix over the next several pages is where the city has studied a particular function within itself with one or more of the outside agencies, and it's been determined through either internal or external study that we are doing it as effectively and efficiently as we can, and that there's no additional cost savings at the time of that study. One study is an exception. In the Parks Maintenance Study that is part of this, it did say at the time that there would be ways to have some operational efficiencies with a single organization. Since that point in time, Washoe County got out of the recreation business and allowed Reno and Washoe, or Reno and Sparks to do it, and Reno and Sparks do not say, they do serve the same customer base, but they do similar and different services, and they're utilizing their facilities to the maximum, and they've agreed to do so. And so therefore, the last time it was studied, the newest study says we're doing a good job in maximizing those recreational facilities. Another study in your public works area, the Loric Study, basically it said you could kind of, you could either consolidate or just do some things that were sharing services and sharing products. The elected bodies at the time chose to do a sharing methodology, and all of the, the items in the study, to my understanding, have been implemented, and we are therefore, um, rating our pavement index the same way. We're utilizing and sharing equipment. We're doing things like snow removal on a regional basis. So we were able to do those while maintaining governance over that power. So those are the two main themes that you see in section three. As we move, and then a part of section three is, is some comments that were made back in November of two thousand and eight, of which your staff has not changed those comments with any significance, that is, all the different departments as to the pros and cons of consolidation that they have then taken into, uh, various studies that have been done in the last two years. We move on to section five, and we've done an attempt to really look at the two main things that are in the city's budget, which are police and fire. They represent over sixty percent of your general fund expenditure, which is the largest consumption of the taxes that we receive and the revenues that we receive for services. We hear continually about the cherry picking rule that's in law enforcement. We applied in the study, there are some details to the best that we could take, the current contracts for both police and fire, and try to administer those contracts as widely as we could for a typical police officer, a typical, um, person in the fire department. And we've provided this information in the report. In both instances, it shows that if we were to utilize what would be a cherry picked contract, that the city of Sparks would incur in excess of two million dollars in the police department to provide the exact same service today, or if it was chose to reduce the budget by the increased personnel costs, you'd have a major reduction in services. And the same thing, over four million dollars in the fire department. The fire department had an extra component, and that it was a combination of the benefits and the salary structure plus the mandated, um, level of service provided on each truck, the manning of those trucks. And so we've attempted to give a cursory view that said, if the two main departments, there's no, there's no significant savings, and we've already done what we can in public works, and we've answered the costing question, we believe to the best of our ability for the state. And then it is in, and beyond that, the, the other couple of questions are related to looking at it in the future and how's the best way to do the analysis. And, and we mentioned a couple of times in the study that if it comes to a governance change, that your council, um, has agreed through your res, previous resolutions, that we will look for efficiencies and operating capability. But if it's, if it requires a governance change as a start, that we would respectfully go. So what you have in front of you is an attempt to have a first draft of the report with the backing, backup detail that we have, that your staff has done at this point. We have about seven weeks before we need to, uh, produce a final report. And so this gives the council and staff a chance to review over the next three council meetings, um, whether or not we need to modify this report in any way. And then it would be my attempt, based on, um, feedback from the council and staff, to bring a final document to you at the August twenty-third meeting for your final review, final edits, modifications, to create a final document to be submitted to the Legislative Council September first or no later than. With that, I'll answer any questions on...
For, uh, Mr. Driscoll. Okay, seeing no questions, do you really need any action on this? Uh, do you need to approve the, uh, the draft?
I think at this point, um, I'm not, I'm not sure I need, um, any particular direction. The manager, um, if he's looking at something, I think the main concern is there's no objections for us to go forward and for staff to do, um, significant re-review of what we have for you as individual elected officials to provide input through the manager's office if there's something that you see. And if the points of discussion that you may have with the manager need to come across the board, then we would get it back on the agenda for an open public discussion sometime up through, but no later than the August twenty-third meeting.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Let's move on. Six point six, consideration and possible approval of a contract between Envision Video and the city of Sparks for broadcast and operation of the city's government channel, Sparks Centennial Television two fifteen. Mr. Mayberry.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Mayberry, your Community Relations Manager. The item you have before you is a contract with Envision Video to provide, uh, broadcast services and, uh, manage our, our government channel, Sparks Centennial Television Channel two fifteen. We, uh, had expected CINCAT to cease their operations later this year. Uh, at the time of this, writing the staff report and putting it on the agenda, uh, CINCAT discontinued their operations a little earlier than we expected. So we have already relocated our equipment from, uh, the CINCAT facilities to City Hall. So, uh, we're broadcasting, uh, a live feed now, direct to Charter, and also on, uh, on the world wide web through streaming video. Uh, Envision has been able to make that transition smoothly with zero interruption. I've worked with them on a variety of projects already. We've been able to reduce costs by fifteen percent, uh, and we'll have greater control of our channel as well. So we certainly recommend approval.
Questions for Mr. Mayberry? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Salerno.
Uh, Adam. Yes, sir.
This, this channel, what, SCTV two fifteen, what is that?
That's, well, that's, it, it used to be channel fifteen. That's the government channel that the city of Sparks owns through Charter Cable. Uh, earlier this year, they relocated fifteen to the digital tier for two fifteen. So it's, it's the same channel. Uh, it's just two fifteen now. And in order to watch channel two fifteen...
So the, uh, I've had some phone calls, people say, uh, "Am I going to be able to watch you guys on channel thirteen?" Or, I think it was thirteen. I don't know, I'd never watch this, but, uh... So now, do they have to have a certain, uh, type of, uh, cable network?
I, I appreciate the question. They need to have a cable box to, to watch our channel. It is, uh, they shouldn't see their costs go up. It is still, uh, in the basic package. But to get to the two hundred tier, you do need a cable box from Charter. So in other words, it, it used to be, up until earlier this year, that you could, the, the cable, uh, coming out of the wall, going in the back of your TV, you can get the, the basic channels, one through ninety-nine or, or less. I'm keeping this simple. But, uh, Charter did relocate channel fifteen to the two hundred tier. So you do need a cable box. It, I think it's, it's about five dollars more.
If you had, uh, uh, Dish Network or DirecTV, would you be able to get this?
You would not. Uh, not on Dish Network, not on any other venue. However, uh, it is being provided on the world wide web. So you can watch it on the internet.
Okay, uh, questions? Mr. Carrigan.
Adam, um, does this contract cover, and kind of unlimited, uh, programming? In other words, if we wanted to have an evening with, uh, Mayor Gino Martini, can we do that? Is this under this contract to do that?
Well, we'd love to have an evening with Gino Martini.
I was going to say Mike Carrigan, but I didn't want to sound too egotistical, so I'd...
Or Mike Carrigan. Um, uh, that is, that would be a, a separate, uh, function. That would be on the production side. This contract is exclusive to the management, uh, and the broadcast of our channel. The production side, the spotlight on Sparks, for instance, that's separate.
Okay, so that comes under another, so in other words, if we, let's say that we all wanted to do a fireside chat or whatever you want to call it from our ward, that would be extra?
Uh, it, it would be. Um, we could certainly contract through Envision or another video production provider.
This forty-six, what is it, forty-three thousand doesn't cover that?
It, it does not cover the, the, the production side of things.
Is that why we always see the operas and whatever the else is on that channel and...
The, 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 the syndicated programming.
There's always some, something that looks like it was made in nineteen fifty on there.
Yeah, yeah, the, the syndicated program. And we, we try to put as much original programming as we can, but, but we're obviously limited in staffing and resources. But we have been able to, to, to produce programming. Many of our spotlights now have a, a life that's a good for, uh, a year or two.
But that's, but, but that is extra money.
Yes, it is.
Thanks.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that CINCAT's not around. I mean, it, um, it's unfortunate that it's gone out of business, but, uh, as the city of Sparks, we were the last government agency still with them in the area. I think everybody else, uh, bailed a year or so ago.
That's correct. Washoe County, uh, left CINCAT, uh, oh, but my memory serves me, right, a couple of years ago, Reno had, also took it in-house as well. And that's really the, the industry standard now to, for municipalities to have their own control of their, of their TV station in-house. Um, I think CINCAT was really ultimately a, a victim of the internet age, uh, because when they started two years ago, or twenty years ago, uh, broadcast equipment, the ability to make your own videos was far more expensive nowadays. Anybody can produce their own videos, and the world wide web wasn't available twenty years ago like it is today, where you can post a video on the world wide web and have access to things like YouTube and have a global audience at a far cheaper cost.
And, um, you know, we're glad to have Envision and thank them, you know, for, you know, this last week to stepping in when, you know, the last minute to make it happen. And, and really, we don't, we don't have a lot of choice here. I'm glad to have them, and, and, you know, I want to go ahead and approve the contract, but, you know, we really need to have this service. The service is something that we're providing to our citizens.
It is up and running, you know?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing it already, and so I, you know, I, I thank Envisions for their, their time, and, you know, I'd, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve the contract with Envision Video and the city of Sparks as outlined by staff.
Do we have a second, and then we'll have discussion? Okay, it's been, um, a motion's been made by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the, uh, contract with Envision. Any, uh, questions? Ms. Ratty.
Uh, just a comment. I, I do, um, mourn the passing of public access television. It's always a, a unique, sometimes entertaining and enlightening, sometimes just bizarre, uh, experience. But, um, I do think that the access, not so much, because I agree with you. I think the internet age and where, where you can publish, if you will, your work, your, is abundant. I think the challenge is actually the equipment and being able to do the, some of the high quality recording that the public will no have, no longer have access to. So, um, I did just want to make that comment. I, I also, um, I'm glad we were able to turn this around so quickly. I, you know, I think it's frustrating that you have to have cable to get it if, if television is your, your main form of access. Um, however, I'm thrilled that we can continue to maintain the world wide web presence, because I do think, you know, that does create...
That's right.
A much more affordable and, um, wide open.
We've increased our broadband capability as well, so you can, we can have the ability to have more viewers online as well now.
Oh, great, so we won't have some of those dark...
Start slowing down and getting choppy, right, yeah, that's the intent.
And then I guess my only other question is, um, whose job will it be to sort of actively seek that additional programming for broadcasts that we're not producing? But I'm thinking of like the, um, Meth Alliance did the Crystal Darkness videos.
Sure.
Some things like that. Is that going to be your role?
Well, ultimately, ultimately, uh, it's, it's my role with, with Envision. They, they'll, they'll go out and they'll seek additional programming. Certainly, if this body, our council, have any ideas, we'll, we'll entertain that as well. We're always looking for good quality programming that, that's free, and that's, that's the challenge. A lot of that programming is costly, and the stuff that you see on our channel is, is free.
And do you think it's helpful, like, for instance, um, on the Senior Services Advisory Board and the Senior Law Project is doing some videos that help people through the foreclosure mitigation process and give them some of the basic information that they need? Do you think it's helpful to have those running on three channels? Or that people expect to go to the county site to get that sort of information?
I'm sure the other bodies would be more than happy to, to broadcast that information on their channels as well, absolutely.
So when we have leads for additional programming that's produced and free, give it to you, and you'll pass it on to them?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if we were still with CINCAT and we wanted to have a night with Carrigan and his cardigan, would we, that would have been extra charges also, right?
Ask me the question again, I'm sorry.
Okay, is further discussion? Okay, there is a motion on the floor, so, uh, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Six point seven, presentation discussion and possible direction on the volunteer weed abatement program. Mr. Crute, you on? And Ms. Patterson?
Good afternoon, council.
Linda Patterson, City Clerk, for the record. What I have before you is a explanation of a volunteer weed program, weed abatement program, that kind of happened because I wanted to see if I could make my neighborhood better. So, that's really the truth. I introduced and went out on the Internet and found a program that was working in Sacramento and took it to Mr. Carey and said, "What if we tried this? What if we tried a volunteer program?" I have had several excellent volunteers in my office that were wanting to do something to make a difference in our community. And, so, Adam ran an advertorial. We asked for other volunteers and actually created a volunteer team. And the first lady that I sent out was so gung ho that she not only called on the places that we actually had received the complaints on, e-Better Place, but she actually did a whole SWAT section of town. And we had great response. About 86 percent of the people that we sent the letters to cut their weeds without having, having any other contact. And then, when she went back out and we sent thank you letters out, what she found is that, that actually the other people, after the thank you letters went out, they, we actually went up to 91 percent of people that participated. Now, prior to us ever doing this, I did speak with Mr. Crutz and Joe Rodriguez, our one and only code enforcement officer, and they were very supportive of this, because it keeps Joe from having to go on those first calls. We're doing no strong arm kind of things. All we're doing is just sending a letter with the picture of their house, saying, you know, "Do you know, there's a code violation that says if it's over eight inches, you really need to cut your weeds." And we were really, I was totally surprised that we had that kind of response. So, that is where we are right now. Wanted to bring it to you and give you the opportunity to tell us whether we should continue or whether we should wait.
From a staff perspective, we view this as having been very helpful. It's essentially clearing out a portion of the workload before it ever hits our single code enforcement officer, and, and, you know, seeing such a high voluntary compliance rate, we think is fantastic. And we'd like the opportunity to do this in other areas of town. And, and keep up the use of those, those volunteer efforts and essentially, you know, multiply the resource that we have.
Linda, thanks for, do we have some comments? Thanks for taking the initiative, I guess, to do this. You know, a lot of times, we don't have employees that want to take on new things, or maybe just don't think of them, want to, but don't take the initiative to do it. And I think that's what makes us Sparks, is we have employees that are willing to think a little bit out of the box and do some special things. And this is exactly one of those things. So, I applaud you for doing that, and same for Neil and your code enforcement person. Mr. Smith?
You know, I support your program, Linda, and I'm glad that it's working, and, you know, I'll make a motion if it comes to that, but I do appreciate your work on this. I have a different question, it might be for Public Works. You know, we, we have weed abatement programs throughout the city, and I think we, don't we hire somebody to do that? We hire a company to kill the weeds on Vista and that's grown up out of the median?
We do contract for that. We have long linear public rights of way, and it's more efficient for us to contract with a contractor who sprays and has the responsibility from the entire year to eliminate weeds.
Well, and this is the question I have. I know that when I kill the weeds at my house, they don't come back. But every year, they're back in the same spots on, in the median, on Vista Boulevard. They're, they're growing up in the cement median where the cracks are. Every year, they come back, and they look like trees sometimes, they're so big. But, why can't they kill them, you know, with one shot, so they don't come back? I just, I'm not getting this at all.
Happy to have information regarding the, what we're doing and how we're doing it provided to you.
I don't know if they're restricted, and that's probably, are they restricted in what they can use that?
Tell us what you use.
I use Roundup. It's just Roundup and a lot of it. I kill weeds, but if, you know...
Further questions, or questions are coming, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, because there might be some Cossack stuff he's using on over there. Linda, I too thank you. I think that, you know, it's a amazing 91 percent compliance rate, and I think, you know, for taking the initiative to do that, and the volunteers are out there doing it. I want to just talk a couple of things about procedures wise. Right now, we have a code enforcement officer. What is his procedure or her procedure if we had, you know, a woman in the job? What is their procedures that they would do? Both, I'd say if a complaint came in or they were driving around, how, what is the procedures they use for that?
Right now, our code enforcement staff is working on a respond to complaint basis only. You know, we are not proactively seeking out additional workload or, or seeking out additional problems to tackle. It is, it is purely, a complaint comes in, and then we will address it as, in its timely manner as possible. Now, if, you know, certainly, we're getting more than one complaint at a time, then we, we go through a prioritization process and, and get to the ones that have been deemed more important than, than the ones that have been deemed less important.
Now, the letter that comes from Ms. Patterson is a very nice letter, and it gives 10 days, you know, from the date of mailing or the date of the letter to go and do it. What does a code enforcement officer, what difference does he do? What is his first letter like?
The, it's actually not a letter. It's, it's a personal contact. The code enforcement officer will go by, knock on the door, try and find somebody home, and seek voluntary compliance, informally, just through conversation. And it's only after we've, you know, exhausted that process, where, you know, we've, we've made an initial request, we go back out, they haven't complied, we talk to them one more time, then we get into, you know, a formal letter process, which kind of, you know, starts the process of, of taking whatever the complaint is through the court system.
So, is the first letter that a code enforcement officer would do, is it similar to Ms. Patterson? Or do, what do they, what does, what do they do?
No, no, it is, it is very, it's, it's very much more black and white. You know, you have this violation on your property, our previous efforts to have you clear that have gone unanswered, therefore, we find you in violation of SMC Code Section dot, dot, dot.
First contact. What, I mean, a first letter coming from code enforcement officer, what, is there anything different? I mean, we have this, if a volunteer goes out and do it, we send a very nice letter. Okay, if the code enforcement officer does it, what does he do?
When the code enforcement officer, if the code enforcement officer goes out, the, the verbal contact is very much along the lines of what Linda's volunteers are doing, and it's, we're, we're trying to seek voluntary cooperation with the law. And, and so, we are trying to be as friendly as possible. You know, hey, we, we received a complaint, we've verified, here's what we've seen, the weeds in your yard are, you know, 18 inches tall. You know, would you please make an effort to get those under control? We will make a follow-up visit in X days, and, you know, and go from there. So, it's, I think it's, there is consistency between how we formerly handled things on a, on a personal basis, and what is being done with the, the letter writing campaign, if you will, that we're using through the volunteer program.
Then I'll move to Ms. Patterson and the volunteers. Let's say, as in such this case, they went out in the 22 properties. Are those properties vetted by the hired help at all with the code enforcement officer? Do they go through and say, you know, okay, yeah, a regular letter could be here, a regular letter could be here, a regular letter? But, I'm pulling this one to go ahead and take and do a different type of letter to it?
No, all we did was have pictures that verified that the weeds were above eight inches, which is what our code says. We had actually put the picture on the letter and just sent the letter out to them. No one actually talks to the person. We don't want our volunteers actually making contact.
I agree.
Yeah. And then, we just send the letter out under my signature.
Is there the possibility with this system, I'm just asking the question, because I'm trying to look at what, what could happen, that, say, an owner owns two pieces of property in the area, and one piece of property got the very nice letter from Ms. Patterson, but the other piece of property would get a certified letter demanding in 10 days that they were gonna come and take action on the property and take the person to court. Is there ever that possibility that could happen?
I could see how that could happen if there had been numerous complaints with the code enforcement officer directly, ahead of us going out to see it, and he was actually beyond the process.
But, they both had the same date and delivered at the same time. Could that, is there any way that there's a cross between what the volunteers are doing and the code enforcement officer?
Not on the same property, no.
I'm sorry, the same owner?
Same owner, if there, if, yeah, there is that possibility, that our code enforcement officer is trying, has been working informally for, say, six weeks on one property and decides, all right, the informal be the nice guy process isn't working, I need to go to the next step and send a letter. Yes, it is, it is theoretically possible for that to hit the same time that a separate property that's being addressed through the volunteers hits the, what we'll call the nice letter. Yeah, absolutely, that's possible.
If I was to say that the first letter, the first contact with an owner was through a letter, and this particular scenario happened, there was never any discussion, no phone calls, anything, how, how would that make the city look?
Well, where I, where I, I, I think I understand where you're trying to go, in that we're, we might be giving the appearance of giving mixed messages. But, what I think is important to understand is the, the level of personal contact with, you know, whoever is renting the property. You know, if we get a call from an owner, the guy that, a person that owns multiple properties and says, "I'm in the city, I got two letters here," the first thing we're gonna do is fill in the rest of the picture for that person and explain what we as the city have done to date on each property. And, and I think that gives us the opportunity to set the record straight as to how each one's been handled.
Because I, I think that that's an issue that probably the staff needs to look at, because I do have a property owner with two pieces of property on the same one, both vacant. On the same day, they received a certified letter from the city threatening them with action, and the other one, a nice letter from this city clerk, asking them to go take care of their property. And then, in the reverse, within 10 days of it being taken care of, they received a nice thank you card from Ms. Patterson for taking care of it, and no response from the code enforcement officer. So, it's, it's set up a very, if you were to put this side by side and look at them, you would under, you would ask the question, "What's going on in the City of Sparks? How does we get, how, how do you get to the point where you have two very different things happening?" And it's two different properties, but there's never was any conversation beforehand, because the properties are vacant, there was no phone calls, no letter. First letter from the City of Sparks for one property was very kind, compassionate, "Please comply." The other one was very threatening, certified, and it, it looked like we had two different cities going on. We had two different things happening, and so, I think that that's a, that's a problem. How do you take the volunteer program and cross it over with that, these confusions don't happen?
Mr. Smith, if after the meeting, or perhaps via email, you would send me the contact information for how this has happened, I will, I will call that person, I will contact that person, and, and lay out how they ended up in that situation. You know, I, I think one perhaps improvement that you're pointing out, a room for improvement, is that we spend a little more time between our code enforcement staff and our volunteer staff, making sure, for lack of a better term, who's doing what to who.
Absolutely. I mean, if you, if you have, I mean, it'd be like, you know, the police department sending out letters and the fire department sending out letters on the same thing with different responses, a different way of approaches and everything else, I was like, who's on first base, who's actually in charge here?
But also, you know, I don't think we're doing the same thing to the same person. I, I understand that we're talking about a couple of different pieces of property that have, that have been handled differently, and what we have is a property owner who doesn't have the benefit of our code enforcement officers' initial attempts to get compliance. And, and that's the, that's the rest of the story that that property owner needs to understand.
And so, it, my question is, if we didn't do that previous thing, then, then we do have a department that jumped the gun here?
I wouldn't say that. I, I would say that you're pointing out a lesson that we're gonna learn.
Hey, I think this, you know, that's what we're trying to do. I'm trying to make sure that the same mistake doesn't happen twice.
Understood, and we appreciate you bringing that information forward.
And we have set up a database that Mr. Rodriguez is aware completely on our, our Internet, so that he knows where our letters have gone, who the owners are, and so forth. So, that is a new part of this.
Ms. Ratty?
The thing that's important to me about this, and, you know, we're gonna learn some lessons across the city in terms of engaging volunteers in amplifying our service levels. One of the things that we need to do in this economy is figure out how to use more and more and more volunteers to stretch our resources. So, I think, I'm sure we're learning lessons in a lot of different ways, and, and that's great. Let's learn from it, let's move forward, let's figure out how to make it better. What's important to me for this is that even if the situation with, with which Mr. Smith has described exists, it is more than offset for me by the 22 properties and the 91 percent compliance. And the reason it is, is because that neighborhood is experiencing a tremendous benefit. And we don't do code enforcement just to be the bad guys and go yell at people, we do code enforcement to improve our neighborhoods. And the tremendous benefit that I see from this program in terms, in terms of improving our neighborhoods, I think if we have some confusion with two property owners, I'm willing to live with that, frankly. Because what I hear you saying is, "We didn't get to the nasty letter as opposed to the nice letter." The whole, the whole concept just sort of makes me laugh, but the nasty letter without multiple contacts first. And so, that property owner is still absentee or not, and frankly, I think many of our challenges are with absentee property owners. If it's vacant, if it's a landlord that lives in another state and is not paying attention to what's going on with their tenants, those are our major problems. And frankly, those are the ones that I think the code enforcement officer is going to end up dealing with, and the solution is probably going to be a bit harsher than the neighbor who just hasn't managed to get their weeds down and is responding to something that's a nicer, gentler approach. So, I'm willing to, to have the city bear some of that confusion with a handful of our constituents who are well out of compliance with code and are damaging the neighborhood around them, in order to have the positive benefit that we're getting from this program.
Okay, do you think you have enough direction, and, or do you want a motion to the effect that you need to keep the program going, or what would you like to see, Linda?
We'd like to try it in another section, and we outlined that in the staff report, which we would be going from Queen Way to McCarran and Pyramid Highway to Pobasko Way as our next section, and then be able to move through the different areas.
Any special reason why you picked that particular area?
I drove through it, and it looks really bad.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's a good, that's a good enough reason, I think. And Ratty?
I'll move to continue the volunteer weed program.
Program, and to have staff select neighborhoods on it as needed basis.
You have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Smith, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Moved by Councilman, Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to continue with the program. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Linda, thanks, Neil.
Thank you for your support. I have a picture of Councilman Carrigan in my head now, it won't go away. He's got a great big rolled collar on his cardigan, and Mearsham pipe.
In his rocking chair.
And rightfully so.
Yeah.
With a big jug of wine. 6.8, consideration and possible action on PCN 08012, a request for final approval of amendment to Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook. Mr., geez, it's been so long since I've seen you here with anything. Mr. Thompson, forgot your name almost.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. For the record, Tim Thompson, senior planner. Before you today is a request for approval of a final handbook for the Wingfield Springs Plan Development. Many of you may recall last, last fall, or early, I guess last fall, you saw the tentative handbook request from Red Hawk and Maverick Development. That, that amendment was to include Village 30 and the golf cottages on what has been commonly referred to as the out parcel. It also updated the, the unit table in the handbook, as well as add some additional uses to the, the commercial piece throughout the handbook. And so, we're back before you today for final approval. I can tell you that nothing has changed. There's been some minor text changes that don't affect the handbook at all. And so, we're recommending that you, you approve the final handbook. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve PCN 08012 as a final draft, is substantial compliance with the city council's action on the tentative approval of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook and the facts supporting these findings set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 6.8, PCN 08012. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously with those present. 6.9, consideration and possible action on PCN... Six point nine, consideration and possible action on PCN 09020, a request for a final approval of an amendment to the Kylie Ranch South Planned Development Handbook. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner. This is also a final handbook amendment request. This is for the Los Altos Crossing development at the northeast corner of Sparks, or of Sparks Boulevard and Los Altos. Some of you may recall that the sign criteria for this particular development was more strict than you would typically find throughout the rest of the city and other commercial developments. And so, the applicant, the property owner, came through and requested that the sign criteria be altered so that it was more consistent with what you would typically find in a commercial development here in Sparks. And then, they also proposed some changes or some additional uses to be allowed within their development. The tentative handbook you approved again last year, and this is the final approval, and staff is recommending that you approve this.
Questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Do you have a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Carrigan and I are trying to decide which ward this is in. Do you have your, hear your motion, there? Go ahead.
Ward five.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve PCN 09020. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Tim. Don't stay away so long, okay?
I see you soon, Ratty.
Okay, six point one zero, consideration, discussion, and possible direction to the city clerk to take all action necessary to prepare a resolution for the placement of an advisory question on the November 2010 general election ballot for public safety and possible appointment of proposed members of the argument committees. Ms. Patterson, go ahead.
Linda Patterson, City Clerk, for the record, the, this is the accompanying agenda item that you were asking about, Mr. Ratty. This is to create the resolution and the arguments. And in order for us to do the arguments based on NRS 293, we must have a committee of three or more, four and three or more against. We actually had a public announcement made last Fourth of July over that weekend, and we have met with all of these people. We're hoping that you would approve these group, this group, and we'll move forward and have that ready for you, the whole resolution with questions, rebuttals, explanations, financial effect, all ready on the nineteenth at that special meeting. Take any questions.
For the record, could you read the names of the people?
Certainly. The four, the four, the people who are going to be writing the pro, it would be Fred Locken, Jill Kanna, and Dave Fisher. The against would be Larry Wilson, Rand Tanner, and Jim New. I believe that's correct.
Okay. Questions for Linda, Ms. Ratty?
Linda, I just have a process question. I got an email from a constituent who was considering applying, but the application turned him off. He didn't understand why we would be asking for the employment background and whether or not you had a college degree and all of those things in terms of being able to participate in a conversation about pro or con. My understanding would be that we just use, that you're using a standard volunteer application, sort of regardless of the process. But if somebody wanted to apply to a committee like this, can they just send us a letter that says, "I'm interested"?
They could have just called me, and that is what the public announcement said, "Call the city clerk's office or go online at." We did not have time to create a new application process for this. We were just looking for people who were interested. And in fact, I did receive another application the morning that we were meeting to do this, and that gentleman did come, and he is actually participating on the committee as well. But that was after I had created your staff report.
So, we're allowing people to participate whether or not they were formally appointed by this action?
Well, you are going to formally appoint that, this committee as of today. And the committee is more than happy to have more people come and give ideas. They're working on that. But we are in a very short time frame.
Sure. So, you, but it did say in the announcement call, or...
Yes, it did. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to direct the Sparks City Clerk to take all action necessary to prepare a resolution for the placement of an advisory question on the November 2010 general election ballot for public safety and confirm the appointment of the proposed members of the argument committees as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to move forward with Agenda Item 6.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Linda. Good job.
I'd like to thank to all of the staff members and Councilman Smith and city attorney for helping when we had that meeting. It was really helpful to have all that expertise explaining things. Some of it, your city clerk did not understand, so it was great to have that support. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Okay, number eight, planning and zoning public hearing action items. Eight point one is a second reading, public hearing, and possible approval of Bill Number 2621, CA 4-09, and ordinance repealing Section 20.92.05 of the Sparks Municipal Code, which inadvertently recorded approved transit-oriented development standards. Go ahead, Karen.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This is a request to repeal a section of Title 20, which was inadvertently codified as Chapter 20.92.005. Part of the Renewable Energy Production Code Amendment were revisions to the introduction of the transit-oriented development, or the TOD Development Guide Book. And the amendments were correctly reflected, or are correctly reflected in the TOD Handbook. However, at the same time, they were inadvertently codified into a new section into Title 20, which is 2092005. So, this item before you today is basically a cleanup item and does not affect the intent of the original approval of the Renewable Energy Code Amendment. And it is currently has in the TOD Handbook, the corrections have been made into the Handbook. So, this is just a, basically, a cleanup item. Staff is recommending that you repeal this.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Karen. Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question on this that I have, and I was answering earlier that you didn't have any changes in the TOD Handbook, but you just said you had changes in the TOD Handbook.
When we did the Renewable Energy Code Amendment, we had, that included an amendment to the Handbook. But this appeal, repeal does not affect that. It's only affecting Title 20.
So, there is no changes in the TOD Handbook? It's only the changes in the title?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public, whoops, Ms. Ratty. Nope. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing in the audience, like to speak to this particular agenda item. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Ms. Ratty?
I move to repeal Chapter 20.92.005 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Title 20.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 8.1, Bill Number 2621. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ms. Ratty? Forgot what you came here for, or? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point one, comments from the council and city manager, Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to publicly thank the city attorney's office, especially Chet and Doug Thornley, for helping me defend a First Amendment issue I had with the Ethics Commission. So, Chet, thank you, and pass it on to Doug for me. Thank you. And also, I'd like to finally thank Ty Cobb Senior for paying up an Army-Navy bet that's about nine months old. I really enjoyed the dinner that he took me out to. It happened to be a chicken breast MRE. So, the moral of the story is never make a bet with a former Army officer. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.